That's other what? That is other than those three areas it goes through, through this unit, architecture being one of those. Um, I joined DCP in January and took over this role in June. And before that I was an enforcement attorney with the state elections enforcement commission. I'm happy to dive in, but I do appreciate you inviting me here to your meeting. And if there's a preliminary matter to get out of the way, I certainly welcome any, any comments. Okay, not seeing any, I guess we could.
Have a question, okay?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm a little confused since we've never done these hearings. When are these hearings actually held? Um, I've been on the board for, I don't know, four to five years and I've never been involved in a hearing and so.
Right, so the rant, I would say, and I was on the board previously and this time for a total of probably, I don't know, 12 or 14 years and only once in that whole time was there a hearing and that was about 25 years ago.
Okay.
My guess is there hasn't really been a hearing in at least the last 20 years.
Okay, and, and just so that you know, Ryan, I'm an attorney.
Oh, fantastic. And then I'm going to be leaning on you heavily. Through this process.
That means she volunteered to run any hearings we're gonna have, so.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Okay.
That, that's excellent news. I didn't realize we had an attorney on the board that is, that will make this all go much more smoothly.
Construction attorney, but yeah, if you could, so Phil, okay, you filled in and said that we haven't had many, but explain the process of how it comes before us because I'd like to understand what it, what the basics are. Thank you.
Fantastic, sure. So administrative hearings, the, the way it works is complaints that are filed against anyone in your profession are filed with the Department of Consumer Protection. They're investigated and we will proceed to determine what we think recommended outcome should be. After that is done, it's referred over to our legal division, this division, at which point we will determine, one, if we can settle the case, dismiss the case, or if we're going to proceed to an administrative hearing. If it's going to proceed to administrative hearing, there's a decision to be made whether or not it's going to be brought to the Board of Architecture, or if it's going to be handled for a hearing officer internally at the Department of Consumer Protection. That is always kind of a conversation that will have either with the board and with the commissioner to determine where it's more appropriate. If it's more of a run-of-the-mill type of case that doesn't involve, you know, a policy decision that would typically be brought, kept inside just to avoid the kind of difficulties of holding a hearing before an entire board. But in a case like the one that you may be getting shortly, that's a decision on how the profession should be brought and, and that kind of policy determination. So that's more appropriate for this board to, to make those final decisions on.
Are we getting this training because you're anticipating that there's one that may come our way?
That's correct. We understand there are a couple of cases that may be coming shortly. It would be inappropriate for me to give you any information on those cases specifically. But just so the rest of the board understands, I can't talk about any specific cases. This is just a, a broad training so you understand.
Okay, great. I'm gonna shut off, I'm gonna mute and stop my video at the same time that I'm here.
Oh, fantastic. So just for, for those of you that are not attorneys, so you can understand kind of what a hearing is. A hearing is the closest thing that administrative agency does to a trial. It's not as formal as a trial, but that is kind of the mindset that you all should have going into a proceeding like this. There will be one member of your board that will kind of be the master of ceremonies, the, the typically the chair that will be directing traffic and making kind of the moment-to-moment decisions. Though there's no reason why you couldn't appoint somebody else if you felt that there was someone more appropriate to be in that position at that moment. It is important for you to understand that while it is a technically a meeting of the board, you should not treat it like a, a typical meeting of the board. It's a, it's an opportunity for people to come and present evidence and for the, or to make a decision. So cross-talk among the board deliberation. It's not the time for you to kind of express opinions. The kind of formality of the moment should be observed during the conduct of a hearing. For those that aren't as familiar with judicial proceedings, the way it'll proceed, as you can see in the procedures and hearing script that was sent out, which will be used by the chair or other presiding officer. There'll be introductory statements beforehand though. You may have want to have some preliminary discussions off the record. I'll talk a bit about the record in a moment. When everybody gets there, there may be issues you may want to confirm before you go on the record that all your witnesses are present for both sides. Discuss whether any scheduling issues, if there's a certain time that you need to take a break for another witness comes, or if this is going to be a multi-day hearing, I don't expect that many cases before the Board of Architecture would be multi-day events, but again, all those kind of administrative issues can be dealt with off the record before the case starts. You may also want to just inquire whether settlement has been discussed or whether there's any benefit to having further settlement discussions. But that's not required. That's at the discretion of whoever's conducting the hearing. You also may want to inquire if there's any legal or evidentiary issues that need to be addressed. Formal motions and formal decisions that all needs to be on the record, but if you want to get an understanding of how the case is going to proceed and if there's preliminary motion practice, it needs to happen ahead of time. So let's say someone brings in a piece of evidence that hasn't been shared and they, one side thinks they should be able to enter it and one side doesn't. That can be something that you address as soon as the case begins rather than deal with it in the midst of the hearing when there's a witness on the stand. Things like that. So you may have heard me reference the record. The record is simply the, all of the testimony and evidence that has been entered in the course of a hearing as well as the transcript from the hearing. That is the basis for your decision. You cannot use anything outside of that record to determine your decision. Let's say that there's someone that comes before you in a hearing and you happen to have a bunch of information about that witness, not enough to conflict you out, but enough that you can't use any of that information to base your decision. You have to limit your decision to the information that's actually in your, in the record. Because that is the information, if your decision was ever appealed up to a court, that would be the only information that that court would have access to, to evaluate whether or not you rendered the correct decision. If there's any request for a, the board to render a decision, whether or not it's on, whether or not a witness should be called, what questions can be asked, what documents can be offered. All of those discussions and that determination should also be on the record. So again, if there was ever an appeal of your decisions, there would be a record for the court to make that decision. Okay, so I just said a lot. I'm going to pause here to see if anyone has any questions so far before we talk about kind of the conduct of the hearing on the, the day-to-day.
I, I don't necessarily have a question except for that. I you referenced some document that I think you probably sent when you sent out this invite a while back. Can you resend that? Cause I'm not sure I actually saved it.
Yeah, sure. Robin, if you can just resend. She sent it out yesterday.
I definitely didn't get it then.
Okay.
Well, at least I don't think so, but I know I have 38 emails. I haven't checked yesterday, so.
Okay, so yeah.
Who would it have come from? I'll do a quick search.
Would have come from Shannon.
Oh, then let me see, maybe I did get it. Again, I do, so they have a lot of emails I haven't looked at.
Yeah, I sent that out yesterday afternoon.
There's two documents. One is kind of a marked.
Got it. I do, I do have it. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Good, good.
So this is going to be your script and it also gives you some important kind of background information to go through. So you understand how the hearing will conduct. And so starting on page two of the remote hearing strip, you can see exactly what the presiding officer will be required to say. And it also will give you a good outline for how the case will proceed. So you start with these opening statements that very simply state what is going on with this case and what is, what the procedure will be for the day.
So, so literally, I mean, if I'm the chair, if I was running it, I'd literally just read that verbatim, fill in the blanks, obviously.
Exactly right. There are some kind of highlighted and bracketed things that you only read some of that in certain instances, but that is absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
So if a hearing is brought before the board, there's going to be two parties. There's going to be DCP, which is a party. And there's going to be the respondent. What's very important for you to understand is while you're used to DCP coming and giving you advice and information, DCP is not your attorney in this instance or in any instance, and we can't give you any advice. We have our interests are not aligned necessarily with the interests of the board. The board is trying to make a decision. DCP is presenting a case. So you should take that in mind when being presented, obviously. DCP would like you to listen to the case that's being presented by all parties and make the best decision. But if you need legal advice in the course of a hearing, that legal advice needs to come from the office of the Attorney General. So a question on procedure, practice and anything. If you expect that there is a complicated legal issue that may be, may come up in the course of hearing, you can invite an AAG to attend the hearing. And whether or not that AAG attends a negotiation between your board and, and that, that attorney. I want to talk a bit about kind of procedure and evidence. So there will be, as you can see from this script, swearing in of witnesses, opening statements, closing arguments. Again, I don't think I need to walk through each of those procedures. It's well explained in the script. But I want to talk a little bit about evidence and testimony. Because for the non-lawyers on the board, it will, can be a little intimidating and also I want to make sure you understand what your responsibility and powers are. So evidence are all the documents and testimony, but I'm going to deal with testimony separately. Pictures, video, anything that is going to be a basis in the facts that you're going to make your ultimate determination on a liability or not. To admit something as an exhibit, a party will usually ask that I request to admit exhibit, whatever that is, one, a, whatever it is, as a full exhibit. Your, the chair or the, the presiding officer would then have to say it's admitted or it's not. But how do you decide whether to admit something as an exhibit? In an administrative hearing, you are not bound by the formal rules of evidence as you would be in a court of law. But you should have, you know, some idea of, is it fair to admit this as evidence and is it useful? So it's some factors that you may want to consider when someone's offering a document as evidence is, do you, where did the document come from? You know, do we know the source of this document? How do you know if the document's authentic? Is, how do you know if this document was just made up or not? And then is the document relevant to the, any fact in dispute? If there are, you know, three elements of a case, let's say if someone's charging me with jaywalking. You know, a picture of me jaywalking would be a relevant piece of information. A picture of me, you know, on the beach in Hawaii wouldn't, though I'd very much like to be there. So relevance, authenticity and understanding the source of the documents are all things that you may want to inquire about before admitting an exhibit as a full exhibit, but the board does have pretty wide discretion as far as admitting evidence. You may hear some objections about hearsay, whether or not it's in the form of a document or in testimony. The rules about hearsay are not formally required to be observed in an administrative hearing. So if someone objects to a statement being hearsay, and I'll give you an example of hearsay for those that aren't familiar. If I came in and I said Shannon told me that you're a bad person, I would, I would be testifying as to what Shannon said. I heard it and I said it hearsay. Typically in court, that's not admitted without some, unless there's some exception to that rule. That rule does not necessarily apply in administrative hearings, though you could apply it if you so chose. Again, use your best judgment as to whether or not you believe the statement is sufficiently reliable and whether or not you think that it's sufficiently relevant to warrant admission despite the hearsay issue. So before we get into testimony here, go ahead.
Quick question. It sounds like the respondents, the architects are usually represented by counsel. Is that correct?
Sometimes they are, sometimes they aren't. It really depends on the respondent. There's no
Okay.
Uh, rule either way. Yeah, often hearings will go much more quickly, typically if there's counsel involved on both sides. As they tend to understand how the flow of a case will move. Unfortunately, that's not always the case and sometimes you get very astute respondents that can handle the case and sometimes you have those that don't understand the process and that can, that can drag on the process a bit and we'll put a bit more onus on the board to make sure they're managing the, the flow of the case effectively. So before I go into testimony, any questions on kind of documentary evidence and your responsibilities there?
I have a question. This is Twig.
Sure.
Does including or excluding evidence have any impact or importance or bearing on a case, should it move forward to an appeals process?
Yes, it does. So if, while you have broad discretion to do what you feel is right and the official rules of evidence don't apply. Let's say a respondent offered something that was, let's say the architect was charged with designing a building improperly and he came in with the original drawings that shows that he designed it properly. Here's the original drawings. If you were to not admit that document for some reason, that may be an issue that is brought up in an appeal if you ultimately found him liable for some form of professional misconduct. So your decisions may form the basis of appeal, but your, the court is going to usually defer to your decisions in this, given it's an administrative hearing. So use your best judgment. But if there is a close call, your best bet is to usually let evidence in. It's less likely to be an issue for the board if you are more liberal with the admission of evidence.
Okay, that was my next question. Is there any downside to being fairly open about admitting evidence and I'm hearing there's.
No, I mean, as long as it doesn't end up dragging on your case if people are trying to admit a lot of, you know, irrelevant evidence, or if there is truly unreliable evidence, you know, someone tries to enter in a document that is purported to be a contract, but you know, is written in crayon and there's a, you know, you can see he just did it, you know, the morning of and so shouldn't be admitted, that kind of like latent fraud. It's definitely something that would might, you know, be something you might want, might want to admit it to your case. So it's up to you. You have discretion, but be aware that certainly have, being a bit more permissive is kind of the idea of loosening the rules of evidence in the first place.
Okay, thank you.
So let's talk a bit about testimony. Most evidence in a case, including testimony, evidence is going to be admitted by witnesses coming up onto the stand, you know, much like you've seen in any TV court case. All the witnesses do need to be sworn in. So get up, give it, be sworn in. That can be done at the beginning of a hearing, but you can swear in all the witnesses. If they're all there, they each need to affirm that they all agree individually. Or you can do each one as they come to the stand. There'll be, the parties will take turns. The state would typically go first in a traditional hearing as it's their case to prove. So DCP would go on, present their witnesses, ask the witnesses questions. Then the respondent would have the opportunity to cross-examine witnesses and ask questions of the same witness and try to elicit testimony in their favor. And then there would be a chance for redirect by the, by DCP and then possibly recross. They can go back and forth like that as long as the, the board permits it and there's still relevant information. There's, may become an issue of leading questions. Again, as the rules of evidence don't apply, there's nothing that would prohibit the board from permitting anybody from asking a leading question in a hearing. A leading question is, isn't it true that you've been an architect for 10 years as opposed to an open and, open-ended question? How long have you been an architect? Leading questions are only permitted on cross-examination in a traditional hearing, whereas leading, open-ended questions can be asked by anybody. You can decide how much leeway you want to give to party that's trying to ask leading questions on direct redirect. But there's no prohibition. So you can decide how you wanted to deal with that and I, I'm not going to give you advice one way or the other on, on how that's going to work. It's really an administrative decision on your end. Before I move on to deliberations, any questions on testimony? Okay. Um, so deliberation. So once all the evidence has been taken and statements have been, closing statements have been offered, you will have to deliberate as to what to do in a case. Because you are an administrative board, you can't meet in private. So you will have to deliberate in public to determine what to do in a specific case. And they should remain on the record. So you shouldn't turn off the recording devices so you can decide what to do. And then you have to determine whether the elements of an offense have been met and proven by a fact in each case. So again, let's prove, if you have to prove that I was jaywalking and you were the, were deciding if I was jaywalking. Jaywalking says, I was walking across the road and I wasn't in a crosswalk. So have you proven that I was walking across the road? What's the, the evidence? Well, there's a picture of me on a road. And then you'd have to prove, was it in, was I in a crosswalk? And then you'd again have to look at, was there evidence shown that the place in the road where I was standing wasn't a crosswalk? So you, you have to line up the element of the violation that was alleged to a fact and then make a determination whether those facts persuade you that the violation occurred. So for each one of those elements, you should state on the record what your finding of fact is. And then at the end, you should state whether you're, you should, whether you conclude as a matter of law that the violation has or has not occurred by the respondent. At that point, the assigned DCP attorney that's writing the decision will take down your, your statements and then convert that into a written decision for your review and ultimate submission as a final decision by, by the board and by DCP.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Is it a majority opinion or unanimous required or?
Unanimity is not required, though always preferred. So the board has to make the decision. But the closer you can get to unanimity, the stronger the case will be if and when it were ever appealed. So I would encourage deliberation to try to get everybody on board, but at the end of the day, only a majority decision. Make sure it is clear in your deliberations if there is dissent on any finding of fact or conclusion of law that it's well recorded by your clerk so that there's a strong record when that decision is read.
Okay, thank you.
Again, DCP can offer legal advice. Please reach out to the AGs if you have questions on procedure or on law. And that is really the kind of bare bones what I thought you really needed to know about a hearing coming up. You can use, your hearings have largely been online over Zoom or Teams, depending on whatever platform is preferred. It really shouldn't change the procedures too much. Typically you'll see in the second document that I sent, the one with all the kind of notes on the side. There will be some differences typically the evidence that people would like to evident, uh, enter into evidence will be sent ahead of time and pre-marked. You shouldn't review the evidence prior to a hearing in case it doesn't end up getting admitted. You should make sure that all of your attendees are in a location. They're not like driving in their car. They're in a location where they can be easily seen and heard and have stable internet. But other than that, the kind of base conduct of a hearing shouldn't change.
May I ask another question?
Absolutely.
You've mentioned that there's the possibility that a respondent would appeal an unfavorable decision by this board.
Correct.
Should an appeal go forward, it's a court case, it's a legal court case. And if that's correct, does this board have any, play any role in that legal court case?
Uh, so yes, it would be a court case. It would be brought to the New Britain Superior Court as an administrative appeal. Um, there's one course that handles all administrative appeals from the state and I believe it would be an appeal of a decision of the Commissioner of Consumer Protection. So I don't know if you would be named as a party, though you may. You would have no kind of active role. You would be represented by the Attorney General's Office in that case. Though informally, you may be contacted by the Attorney General's Office and asked for information or unlikely for testimony, though that would be highly unusual. So that would, that would be the content. Again, while they happen, they're not particularly common and typically only occur in very high dollar value cases or in cases where you have somebody's license being revoked. Those tend to be when those appeals happen because they are costly and time-consuming.
So, okay. All right, thank you.
So I have a question as well. Prior to actually going into a hearing, what if any paperwork do we receive? I mean, do we receive the complaint? Is there an answer? What is the, the pleadings that we get, if any?
Right. Um, typically all the pleadings, to the extent that they're relevant, will be brought, entered as evidence. So you're typically, you're not provided a, the case ahead of time as you would, as a judge would in a court, because you're sitting both kind of as judge and jury. So typically, no, there are no pleadings that are provided to the board ahead of time of a case. It's simply noticed and you're given the notice of hearing, I guess would be the only document which the notice of hearing will give a list of the statutes violated and a plain statement of the alleged violations. But is not as exhaustive a document as you would be used to in a, you know, civil complaint.
And how many members of our board have to be involved in a hearing for it to be legal?
You just need a quorum.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So that was the end of the substance of what I wanted to talk to you guys about today. Again, we appreciate your service and understand that this is on top of your busy personal schedules and your other duties as board members, but time, time it's important because you're the ultimate authority on what it is to practice architecture in the state of Connecticut. And for you to weigh out on some of these issues is, is highly valuable. So with that, I, again, I open it up to any other questions, any other question, comments, concerns? So with that, I again, I open it up to any other questions, any other question, comments, concerns. I can answer them now. If anything comes up between now and any potential noticed hearing down the line. I am available. I'm happy to walk through it again. I can't speak to any particular case that's broad as I supervise the unit that will bring in the cases. But as kind of general, I don't understand how hearings work, you know, what happens in the situation. I'm happy to walk you through that stuff. And I'll put my email in the chat as well. If you have any questions after the fact.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ryan.
Yes, without turn turn it back over to the chairman and there's any other business to conduct.
Thank you.
We'll end that today. We have our scheduled meeting on November.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. So we'll address other items then.
Great, thank you.
No problem. Have a good day, everybody. Thank you, everyone.
See you next week, two weeks, three weeks.